All right, seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just make a note that all council members are present. Full business approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of February 20th, 2025 were provided for review. So I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of 2025, 20th February, 2025, as presented.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion in a second, caller roll.
Mr. Kowalowski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Before we get into the rest of the agenda, I just want to make an announcement that if anybody is here to make public comment on item number five, which is about the rezoning of the green, I don't know if you can see down there, the lower left green, it was Shenpease property, that's being tabled tonight, so we're probably not going to accept a lot of public comment on that one. It'll be tabled and it'll be, I think, on the agenda on 20 March. Okay, audience participation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? No takers. Presentations, the annual library report, librarian, our librarian director, Terry will present the 2024 annual review of Lansing Community Library. Terry, you're up.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. First, we had a great year in 2024, and I am looking forward to presenting that to you this evening. So for the last 27 years, when we were established a library, our strengths have laid in our educational opportunities, community engagement, and helping people find employment through, you know, helping with resumes, job applications and such. So one of our main missions is to, that we believe everyone should have the freedom to explore information, technology, and resources with ease and openness. So with some of the accomplishments in 2024, we have started highlighting our local artists with photography and artwork throughout the library. They were gracious enough to loan their artwork to us throughout the year, and we'll come in and switch it out and they'll even work on some of our themes throughout the year and help us make it more enjoyable to be in. One of the other projects that we are almost finished with in the children's section is we have decided to do away with the Dewey Decimal System. It is a research that I did during my, during grad school about for our younger kids not having Dewey and going with more genrefication. They are able to find things easier, they see things that they want that they didn't think of because they're grouped together. So we have all of geography, we have U.S. geography, world history, U.S. history, health, food, you know, all of these different genres, and it also helps improve our circulation because, you know, they're able to find more things that they were, that they didn't know that we had. So as you can see with the yellow arrows, those are the, the way they're all delineated. We have about 50 more books to go at the end, so that's one of, that's taken about two years to complete. But most importantly, this year, just on Monday, I turned in our accreditation paperwork to the Northeast Kansas Library System. This is the first year that we will be eligible for the development grant that is offered by our regional library. So we are pretty excited to see how that turns out. That'll be going before their executive board here shortly, and we should know in probably April or May about that. So the activities that we have for our youngsters, we do everything from Storytime, Thousand Books for Kindergarten, Dolly Parton, we go to schools and daycares in the area. We have special events like this bottom one, we talked a little bit about before the end of the year, New Year's Eve party that we had downstairs, we had a balloon drop, they did arts and crafts, had lots of food. We sugared them up before they went home with mom and dad before their parties, so it was great. And it was pretty loud, they had their horns and whistles, and this floor had a lot of fun hearing. I'm sure they were a little jealous. For our adults, we have our book club and our yarn club. The pictures that you see, we had the Operation Wildlife bring the eagles out this year. That was pretty interesting, they brought out all of the different, the size of the nest, what the eggs look like, what they eat, how heavy they are in comparison to other objects, the kids got to guess. We have author visits, we recently had Kevin Benson come out and talk about his experience in, in writing his book about Gulf War I. That was very interesting. He talked for about 45 minutes and answered a ton of questions from the audience. We also partner with Deeper Windows, they come in once a month and we do arts and crafts with, with that group, and that we eat lunch together. And we also go to Twin Oaks, all three facilities now, and make sure that they are able to check out books. We helped, we connected them with the state library to make sure that they were able to have the books on tape that are, that is free through the state, and they get mailed directly to them. And we are now working on getting a schedule for them to come to the library once a month so they can check out their own books, so now that they have, they have a bus that can bring them to us once a month. It will not replace our visits, but it will be in addition to. So in 2024, we, for our circulation, we did see a 19% increase in our digital checkouts. We did see a slight decrease in our physical checkouts, but overall, our circulation stayed steady. 70% of our circulation was from our physical collection, and we had about 43,000 items checked out from our library last year. Visitors, we had about 24,000 come through our door. We had about 13 and a half percent increase over 2023, and 4,4300 attended one of our 241 programs that we had scheduled, that includes Storytime, Clearup through the adults. And the group that you see up there is our book club group, and it's fortunate they meet at six o'clock after we close because they are a pretty rowdy bunch. So technology-wise, we did have a 57% increase in our Wi-Fi usage, we have about 18,000 hits on our Wi-Fi, and that is sustained hits, not just someone walking by, walking in, picking up something and walking out. That is more than 15 to 20 minutes of connected to our Wi-Fi. We had a 25% increase in our public access computers, we do have five public access computers for people to use. And one of the, the new app that we just introduced is Aspen Lita. Last year, we, after we implemented our library app called My Libro, towards the end of the year, we discovered that our card catalog system that we already pay for was going to be launching in, at the end of last year, in 2024, a new app that is, has a complete interface with that, so there is no glitching when there's updates. So we were able to see a cost savings with that because it is part of our card catalog system. So it's roughly $1,000 to $1,500 savings each year with that. So Dolly Parton, I know that that's something that we are all proud of, being the first in the county to offer that back in 2021. We are reaching, we have reached 78% of all children under the age of five in the city of Lansing. We have, right now, actually, it's more since then because I had some more register, but 370-some children are now, have participated in the program, and we have mailed out over 5,000 books since 2021. So, and at this time, it is totally funded by donations. Roughly 4,000 has been through donation, private donations from the residents, and 2,600 was from the children's, children's trust fund through the state, that we get a 50% grant from the state for Dolly Parton Imagination Library. So financially, we have a total investment by the taxpayers, you know, the tax is $441,000. The value of the services, when I went through, figured out the average, and it is on the next slide, the details are on the next slide, they, there was a value of 2.9 million of services, and so a return on investment of 556%. So, in, so they, in return, the community members saved the 2.9 million by utilizing library resources, whether through borrowing books, attending programs, using technology, or accessing our other free services. There is something for everyone at the library. This results in a return of the 556%, meaning that for every $1 invested in the library, the community receives a $6.50, 57 cent value. This demonstrates that the library is not only a vital educational and resource, cultural resource, but it is also a smart financial investment for our residents. So these are the, if you want to see all, I have the graphic, if you want me to email it to you on the Excel sheet, I will do that. It was bigger on my screen. I don't know why it's smaller on this one. But, so, looking forward into 2026 and beyond, this is what our bookshelves look like at this point. Realistically, books, the library bookshelf should be about three-fourths full. It increases circulation, it also eases browsability for our patrons, and to be quite honest, every time, and I know I've said this the last couple of years, every time we order a book, a book has to come off the shelf. We just do not have the space anymore, and I know you guys have heard that ever since I became the director, but I've been doing some research, and I do believe that we found a reasonable solution to that, other than kicking CED and public works out of the building. So there is shelving that we can get that is, that can be a little bit higher, it's not too much higher. I can still reach it, Tonguey and Baser all have shelving similar to this. It's actually narrower shelving than what we have with the wooden shelves, and they're about two inches longer, so when you put them side, you know, end to end, we gain about 20 inches of bookshelf space, and we'll add an extra row as well. So those are some options that we're looking at, and hopefully with the accreditation development grant, maybe I can look into utilizing that, those funds for something like this and do it over the course of a few years. So that is what we are looking at at this point. So how do you find out what's going on at the library? Well, you can always download our app, our website is, you know, we're connected to the city, and we are a department, so you can find the library right through the city website. We are on social media, we do have a monthly newsletter that goes out that you guys all get every single month, and we are also in the Lansing Connection, so that is what I have for you. Do you guys have any questions at all for me?
I don't have a question, I'd just like to thank you for what you're doing with the local artists and highlighting them and, and their artwork, and again, you've been doing, providing educational opportunities from toddlers all the way up to seniors since you've been there, so that's much appreciated by the council.
Thank you very much, I'll let my staff know that, they do all the hard work. All right.
Thanks, Terry, anybody else?
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Terry. Okay, new business, item number three is Resolution B3 2025, the creation of an RHD application for the Riverbend Heights subdivision, which by picture is the one on the lower, lower right, in the blue. The attached resolution declares the city's intent to establish a district, adopts a development plan for the housing and public facilities within the district, sets an April 17th, 2025, as the date for a public hearing on the matter, and directs notice that that public hearing to be published and delivered to Leavenworth County, Lansing USD 469, and the city's planning commission. So I need a motion to adopt the Resolution B3 2025, the creation of the RHD application for the Riverbend Heights subdivision.
We'll move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, I'm sure most of the population here tonight to tell us what a good job I'm doing. So you're probably here to talk about this specific item, and I had mentioned earlier to a couple of you that probably a better time would be at the public hearing on April 17th, because that's what the public hearing is for, is for the public to be able to voice their opinion on this, this type of issue. That said, I'll allow anybody two minutes if they want to speak tonight to just come up, if you do want to speak on this topic, you can come up, sign your name and, and put your address down, say what you want to say, and then, you know, I mean, we're, we'll gladly listen to you, I just, I wanted to make the point that the public hearing is specifically for this resolution and the RHD on that side. So if you have general comments about the whole development you want to talk about, I mean, whatever you want to talk about, you get two minutes.
And one thing I'll add too, there's representatives from the developer's firm, from Paul Sinelli, as well as a representative from them too, so if the council has any questions about that, they could ask him.
Okay. They're prepared to answer any questions, too. Okay. Any takers on that? What's that?
You gotta, you gotta come up here and sign up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Am I going to talk immediately? Or?
No, 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 no.
Go put it down.
Your, your two minutes are up, no, I'm joking. You took too long to sign up. No, I'm just joking, you just sign your name and then you can address.
And then you'll call me up later?
No, no, you come up, no, you're there now, you're up.
Great, okay.
Right past, you're using time, ready to go.
I know. Okay, noted on your comments about April 17th, thank you very much for letting us know. I think I'm coming here to speak for-
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Sarah George, my address is 532 Holiday Court in Lansing. And I am coming here probably because a lot of the other people are here, I'm guessing for the same reason, that we only just now heard about this, and it seems like a lot of decisions have been made that have not gotten enough public input to you all, that your constituents do not feel like you are listening to our voices. And so we want to come and be heard, and I understand you want us to come on the 17th, but I think the fear here is that you'll already make your decision by the 17th, and that's not very, that's not very comforting to people who elect you to be in office to represent us. So I am asking you to please listen to the concerned citizens who do not want added development without good accounting for the consequences that it's going to have on our community, and how it's going to change the face of Lansing just because a developer says, hey, I see some blank land, let me do something nice and fancy for you. I think it just requires a bit more sober thought, and I didn't come prepared to speak immediately, so I do appreciate you for listening to me ramble a bit, thank you very much.
No, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, come on, anybody who wants to-
I just have a question.
Sure.
My name's John Redden at 24170 131st Street in Leavenworth. My only question is, will the vote, yea or nay, on this proposed high-density subdivision, will that take place on this April, April date for the public hearing?
The public hearing is, well, Josh, you can, you can address that.
Sure, so the, the procedure works like this, where, this is the second of three resolutions that the state of Kansas requires to enable a RHID project to, to be started. So the April 17th will be the resolution where the, the council, if they so choose, would create the district, which would enable development and the pass-through of taxes that the development, that the project is, to then be given to the developer as they develop the land. So at that point, then the developer would be able to pursue entitlement for the land to become developed in, in a subdivision.
So at this next meeting, there won't be a vote?
There will be, there will be a, there will, there will be a vote on whether or not we create the district that would allow the property tax abatement to be then given back to the developer as he develops in the future. So there will be a vote up or down whether or not the city council wants that district to be created, the, the, for lack of a better term, legal entity that will then allow us to, to, the developer to receive property taxes from the city and the county.
Yeah.
I'm April Cromer, I live at 23916 131st Street. I would be directly affected to this, although I was not someone that was notified in this. The only thing that I, that I really want to bring to the public, to your attention, is I want you to consider some of the neighborhoods around this area. You have Sherwood Forest, Rock Creek Loop, Knollwood Estates, those are all areas that are consistent with the current neighborhood. You have homes that just, were just built within the last couple of years upward of 650,000 or more, and this would be lower-income housing that would be placed right in the middle of these properties that are directly contiguous of that. So when you guys are considering this, I really, really wish that you would go and at least drive that area so you can see yourself. This isn't like it's a vacant lot and you're putting that, these, what you call affordable houses, and I understand that you want to try to build a tax base, but some of the things that even Mr. Gensler said at the last meeting, he said it shouldn't fit the neighborhood. Well, what's being proposed does not fit the neighborhood. Zoning from, the current now is rural, and I think it's, it's one unit per acre, every area in that area has one acre right now. Even some of the houses that were sold to the people that are in this audience from the Inglehearts were 2.5 acres. They have big homes, and this would be dropped right in the middle of that, and so please consider that when you are considering this project. We're not saying we don't want development, we're saying we want you to keep it to the spirit of what it has, one acre, 2.5 acres, not something that's going to lower the values of the homes that are being built. I don't think that's a good idea, and that's all I have to say, you'll see me again on April 17th, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I'd like to make a comment about would be is that when, when comments are made that they're not getting notice, we, we provide all statutory notice, any notice that we're required by law to give is put to the public.
Right, right.
Now, I, I certainly understand that some folks learn to think-
I think her point was, that she didn't get notice, she didn't say that she's required to get notice and didn't get notice, so I mean, there's a difference. A lot of, a lot of folks don't understand all the rules, you got to be, you know, 1,000 feet from X or 200 feet from Y, but that's the requirement.
I just don't want that to go out as if we didn't give notice, we do.
Did anybody here raise your hand if you got, when you were getting notice?
Who's speaking? Who is speaking?
I am.
Okay, well, if you want to speak, then you need to come up to the podium, and then you need to ask a question, okay? I, I don't want it to go crazy in the audience where I don't know who's talking.
I agree, I'm very sorry.
That's okay.
For my person.
No, I'm not, I'm not-
My question is, who was given notice? Because you say you've met all the requirements to provide notice, but I did not receive notice, and nobody here is saying that they received notice.
Okay, so the requirement, ten minutes.
I believe it was sent out with the annexation, so that would have been, I mean, you guys remember there were probably, what, 15 people at the library meeting in September, so notice went out.
No, I meant requirements for the notice, like-
I believe it's-
Is it two, three with-
For the, for which are we speaking?
Well, let's say for this one.
It depends on what process.
For their-
Do you want to know what the distance is, Josh, the radius of the property?
For a rezoning, for a conditional use permit, the statutory requirement for property located within a city is 200 feet. For property located without, outside of the city, it is 1,000 feet.
Okay.
And that is for rezonings and conditional use permits.
So there is no notification required for this one, is that what you're saying?
This is, the resolution that you are voting on is the statutory requirements for notification of a public hearing for the district creation.
So that's a no.
No, that, it, there is a requirement, we are meeting the requirement tonight.
By having the meeting, though.
By-
By mailing out something, that's-
Correct, the stat, yeah.
Your answer on these folks who are asking the question why you didn't get a notice.
So the statutes, the statute of Kansas, when they created the RHID program, requires this secondary, the, the second resolution to be created that would notify the public of a public hearing.
So this, this thing we're doing tonight is the statutory requirement to make sure the public is aware, and then the public has an ability to come and speak.
Correct.
I hope that makes sense.
Were there supposed to be announcements sent out from the city to, to the nearby residents about tonight's meeting?
Come up to the mic if you're going to speak, please. Well, he's asking about notification, we have to have all these talk to him.
I'm sorry. Okay, so it's kind of a little fuzzy, Mr. Gensler, about the announcements about tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Were there supposed to be announcements sent out alerting everybody, all the concerned citizens here, if they live in the, in the appropriate distance from the, from the RHID, was there supposed to be an advanced notification sent out about tonight's meeting?
There is not.
There is not?
No.
Okay, how about the, the annexation meeting back in November?
That was a-
Voluntary.
That was a voluntary annexation from a, from a private citizen, conducting essentially, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, a private transaction between the city and, and a private citizen. That was not required to be notified by statute, is that correct?
Because it's a continuous contiguous piece of ground with one owner, so it wasn't required. I mean, other than, when we say required, we, we, the city spends money for a website, and all this information is readily available to anybody who would like to check it out. Now, based on when you've used the term, sir, everybody, in, in the legal world, what does everybody mean? Are we supposed to mail it to every citizen in the city? Of course not.
Now, everybody within the, within the, I think he said-
200 and 1,000, depending on if it's within the city, it's 200 feet, if it's a property that touches the property, but it's county, then it's 1,000 feet.
Okay, and I fall in that latter category, but I received no-
But there, there is no requirement for an annexation when it is a voluntary annex- But there, there is no requirement for an annexation when it is a voluntary annexation by a private citizen, private property owner, asking to be brought into the city.
Yeah, it's just the types, types of annexation. If the city was to try and annex a chunk of property.
Which we're not.
No. I'm just saying, if we, we have in the past, if we were doing that, we would have to notify everybody.
Yes.
Area. Because a citizen comes and says, hey, I would like to annex my property into the city, that's not a requirement to let the whole city know that this person wants to annex their property into the city. If you look down Eisenhower and just look at who's in the city and who's not, we have a whole squiggling line of people who have voluntarily annexed into the city that were in the county. And it looks crazy, because it's county, and then right across the street is Leavenworth, and then little chunks are Lansing. So, those are folks that had actually done the same kind of thing that they did. Doesn't require.
They wasn't trying to build public housing.
If you understand what I'm saying.
So, the April 17th meeting, will there be announcements sent out to those people that are within the 200 and 1,000 feet?
I believe that that is posted, well, it says delivered to the county, the city, I mean, the school district, planning commission, and I think we posted it in the paper, right?
Yes, we will be posting this in the paper, yes.
Yeah. But, I mean, everybody here, sitting here tonight, knows it's on the 17th now, who are probably the folks that are interested. I mean, you could pass the word to anybody else who would like to attend the public hearing on the 17th, especially if they have a public comment that they'd like to make.
And I wanted to see my.
Okay.
But, when we, when we talk about this Riverbend Heights RHID, you really can't do that alone without talking about everything else that's going, going on. You, you see this right here, okay? There's only three developments that are being proposed right now in this area. You have the Delaware Bridge, and you have the Riverbend Heights, and now you have this right here, property owned by Epic Estates, and they want to rezone it to multifamily housing. So, when you add up all these housing units, you're talking 2,500, over 2,500. And school board has to be aware of that. And we all have to do it, because we're talking about a lot of congestion. It's going to change this whole Leavenworth county. You just can't look at one project alone. You have to look at all three simultaneously. We want to, we'll talk about this next Saturday.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to just make a comment. So, land use in the city, if we owned all this property, we could certainly do it different. We don't own the property, right? So, these are property owners who have decided they want to develop their property. This isn't the city saying, we, we're developing your property. This is the owner who's saying, this is my property, right? And they have their own property rights, just like everybody else, who says, I want to build this, this, and this on my property. So, legally, we can't just go, man, yeah, we don't really like your idea. Too bad for you. I mean, they have their rights as a property owner. So, I, what I'm just trying to say is, the city doesn't drive all this necessarily. What we do is make sure they're following the correct processes and getting it done. Now, we definitely hear the concerns, especially on congestion, and is this really the right mix in the right spot? All that can be hashed out with the folks who own the property and are trying to develop. This was a conceptual, I think, planning document that we had originally put out for a meeting that has kind of taken a life of its own out in the, the general vicinity, not really intended for that purpose, because what you see in that green box and the yellow box may be totally different. It might, might be all housing. It might be all commercial. It could be rezoned all industrial. I mean, it just depends on what that property owner wants to do eventually.
Did the city recruit this developer, this guest?
Recruit them?
We did a housing study. The housing study said, we needed housing. There's like three houses on the market in Lansing right now. The housing study said we needed housing. The city council hears from residents all over that say we needed housing. So, we reached out to a developer. That said, he reached out to seven, eight, nine different properties throughout town, and I think this was the one that worked for the project. So, we didn't encourage him to sign a contract on the Inglehart property or anything like that. But, yeah, we did talk to a housing developer based on residents' feedback to the city council.
But it appears that the Inglehearts aren't acting entirely independently, that you are having some discussions with the developer in Inglehart to bring all this together. Let's.
No, I don't think that's a fair characterization, sir.
It's a private property transaction.
The city does not go out and recruit anybody. This council has directed Mr. Vandal and staff, the number-one priority that the citizens have told this group here that's been elected, that their number-one priority is more housing so they can have younger people live in this town. Get affordable housing. Get things that people can buy. Mr. Vandal, that's what he does at the behest of his elected officials. And to say that we're going out recruiting certain individuals, it's no different than if Josh has a bunch of B3 properties out there or industrial lands that you go through LCDC that then put out on the market, that we've got properties available. We've got land available. Well, we don't have any land available. So, but you can tell folks that there's these programs that are available if you seek the guidance and you go through the processes to maybe get those. That's all that is. The city is in not, in no business with these folks. We are a process of the legal process for these people to go through to see if this elected body thinks it's a good project. And that's all it is. I understand people may be against it, and I understand that. It's always that way, always. No matter what city you go to, this is not unusual. I can assure you of that. So.
City attorney just made a comment that it would be your decision whether it's a good project.
And write.
No worries, sir. I'll get to it in just a second.
We'll do it before we start talking.
I'm going to forget what I got to say. I'm kind of old, sir. City attorney said that you guys decide whether it's a good project or not, when you just said 13 seconds ago, I'm exaggerating, that the landowner can put up whatever they want to, and you guys don't really have a say-so.
No, I said they can try to rezone and develop what they want. But they still have to meet all the requirements of the planning commission, right? And then if they want to rezone, we're going to have to make a decision. Does that make sense for that piece of land? So, yeah, they do make decisions here. But it's not like one decision. There's like steps in this process that just go on.
I think we understand that. And your statement, you put the landowner in, in contact with the developer, and then they reached out to a bunch of different developers. So, you guys kind of are in the recruiting, if you will. Maybe you would disagree with that comment. But, I mean, there is a lot of stuff going on, and you guys say, you know, go to our websites. We can't even find the minutes of these meetings that are videoed on your, so we can't watch anything. It's on.
They're all over the, our website.
Oh, sir.
Yeah. And this, the video from this meeting will be on YouTube tomorrow afternoon, and it's like that.
Well, after the meeting, if you could show me where it's at, I would really appreciate. Like I said, kind of great.
Hundred percent.
Appreciate it.
My name's April Cromer. I just have one question, and it's probably for the attorney. So, with, my question is, with this whole project, I get that the landowner wanted to annex, and that she said, hey, this is my property. I want to annex into the city, and I realize the county's not going to give me what I want. So, I go to Lansing, I get this, whatever. Is it, is it common practice to have an RHID go before this governing body, before the zoning process? Because what I see with this is it almost feels that everyone's making a decision, and you're trying to sway the governing body to what you want to have with this. Is this the normal process? Get your RHID first, and then decide how we're going to zone it? Or is it, let's decide what we're going to do with this property? Because what I'm hearing from, from everyone is, and I get it, I looked at the statutes, and no one needed to be notified for the annexation, but there are, it touches the county. And so, with this RHID process, what we're hearing in this audience is this is a, a government-assisted program with the tax credit for these homeowners. How does that benefit? You don't have to answer that now, but my question, more importantly, is it normal to have the RHID application go before? Is this the normal process?
Well, I would say it's following the process. However, the RHID, Tim can speak to this way better than I can even, but it's relatively new program that's been offered by the state. These are things that are, I would say there's, at best, is a handful of these that have been approved across the state, because it's a new opportunity. And so, the, people understand how it works is, it's a pass-through. It's, people are looking for incentives. How do we get to build houses? How do we build houses that will allow younger folks to live in communities that they're barred from living in? Like Mr. Vandal has said, we've got three houses listed for sale. Everybody's got to go somewhere else to live, because there's nowhere to live.
Wouldn't you want to put those younger people up in the city instead of allowing all of us old people?
We, again, but we don't, we don't control. We don't control the land. We don't own the land.
I understand that.
I would have loved it, I would have loved it if they bought the golf course property. I would have loved that.
Yeah.
And they reached out to the golf course. And you know what the golf course said?
Yeah.
Golf course said, no.
Yeah.
There's, there's probably seven or eight different properties in town that they reached out to, and they said, no. So, I mean, there's, there's only so much we can do. Again, it's a private property transaction.
And I understand that from a legal standpoint. I totally understand that. But this is a process I think we're all concerned about, because when it's being brought before the governing body, which you folks, you men, have the power to vote, it's your authority. That's why we, well, we didn't elect you, but I did knock a few doors for some of you. So, you have that authority for, for the people in the city to be able to say, is this right? Is this going to cost taxpayers more dollars in the long run? Just like the emails I sent to each of you, I had some pretty pointed concerns. I know, because I spoke with school board members, you guys are not collaborating with these projects. In my opinion, and this is just a suggestion, you should have a town hall. Get everyone involved. Or you wouldn't have, half the meeting for 55 hours were talking about something, and you guys probably want to get the ball rolling. But these are real concerns by real people who live in that area, and we are really concerned. I know the people who just built their houses are concerned about the valuations of their home going down, having lower-income houses right behind their homes.
Well, I mean, you keep saying lower-income houses, huh? This has nothing to do with income, okay?
We, we were, we were told it was affordable.
It has zero to do with income. Listen to me, okay? This is a tax incentive program, so you, what you're getting back is money that you use to build your infrastructure. So, your roads, your sewer pipes, your water lines. That tax is the property tax that you get back. It has nothing to do with lower income.
Well, we looked at, we looked at the plans now.
The houses will be about 300 to 320.
In that area, it's low income. For the houses being built, it is lower income. If you would go and look at the new houses that are being built that's contiguous to the property, you would understand what I'm talking about. So, it is. And it, it is a concern of people. It's a concern of people that just bought property that want to build 750. I had one girl tell me, we want to build a million-dollar home, and we don't want to do that if we've got nine of these homes behind it. And so, I don't think anyone is opposed to it. They just want a different type of housing to be, to fit their neighborhood of what they're trying to build. That's all. I'm sure each and every one of you, if whatever neighborhood you live in, you would feel the same exact way. You would not want to see your home value go down because of a particular project. I know that you wouldn't. You're human. And so, please consider that. I, I think the scariest with the RHID is just that. They understand, obviously, the developer can't, they can't afford the road, the vein structure in it, and so they need some incentive program. We get that. We can, we can see the writing on the wall with all of that. It's just our concern of having the right type of homes in that area. So, thank you again.
Ma'am, I just want to address one, because maybe this will help some other folks. And I know the mayor's kind of said this already. This, this body is not here to dictate and tell people what they can do with their property. They're just not. They have to follow the process to see if a, again, if I use the word projects, or if they, you know, whether the zoning, whether or not the plans, what goes before the planning commission, what then what comes to this council, they are not to be the ones to determine. Like, for example, if this council were to say, you know, we just accept what you say, and I don't care what that developer comes in and does, and he spends time and effort, and he does all this stuff, well, guess what he's going to do? He's going to sue this body, because he's not doing, being able to do with his property what he is allowed to do under the law. Now, this RHID, that's something totally different. But if he wants to build, let's say he doesn't need that, and he just comes in and wants to build 100, 200, 300, 400, whatever it is, and then this body just says, no, we don't want that. Arbitrarily says, no. Well, guess what? Then, we as a citizens here to pay taxes in this town are going to pay for the lawsuit to, to fight that off, and if they win, guess what? They're going to get to do it anyway. So, I mean, it's a, it's a process. I understand it. It's, you know, people probably have heard the term NIMBY. Not in my backyard, right? We've all probably heard that. And that's, and I don't care, I've been here a long time. Development has been stymied for a number of years. And when we were going and building other things, the same argument is used all the time. This is nothing new. I'm telling you, it's nothing new that we're hearing. We certainly understand the concerns. I know the mayor's heard the concerns. Tim has heard the concerns. We read them online. But I think what you have to do is you have to go with the process, and you have to come, come and express your opinion. Nobody's telling you not to come. In fact, the mayor's told you many a times, come, please, express your opinions. But at the same time, your property rights are no greater than the person who owns the land that wants to do something with it, right? I mean, what if you came to, Josh said, I want to put up a, two sheds. Well, the city says, or county says, you can only have one. Well, guess what? We're telling you what you can do with your property, right? You don't like it. You, what's wrong with two sheds? Well, there's rules, okay? These people are following the rules. And then eventually, it's going to play out through the process. Please come and express your opinion.
And maybe one thing that I would add, too, I mean, the, the feedback from the housing study, the feedback I've received, the feedback I think most of the council has received, I mean, I think people would love 500 and $600,000 houses absolutely, but most of the feedback that I think the housing study showed is reasonable housing for people to be able to move into town. And it's, you know, what, what a world we live in when $330,000 is considered low income. But that was the feedback that we received in our housing study, that we needed housing for younger families to be able to move into town.
Tim, when you say younger families, you're talking about entry-level police, entry-level fire, entry-level teacher, murder time, homicide.
Yes.
Pardon?
Correct.
Thank you.
You have something, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Alicia Manchulant. If you know me by another name. But I have just some questions about the whole thing. I'm really curious. I'm glad I did see something come through Facebook from a friend, but not from the city. So, but I'm just curious about this whole tax incentive thing, okay? So, these people are getting, they're going to get a refund from whom for their infrastructure, I guess is what I'm curious of?
Okay, so, they would get the property tax that you would normally receive.
For the city and the county.
Right.
Right?
Not the state, because the state, of course, made the program and exempted herself from the 20 miles. But that basically goes back to the developer until it pays for the infrastructure part of the cost.
So, once you adopt this, then you've said, yes, we're going to do this for you. So, so people should be concerned about whether this is adopted or not now, right? I mean, if they're.
This is, this is the time, like I said.
The money.
Your opinion now, or on the 17th? What's your opinion now or on the 17th?
And just to clarify, I mean, the, the money goes to the infrastructure for the subdivision. So you're looking at roads, curbs, gutters, water lines, sewer lines.
Water drainage.
Exactly.
To make sure adjacent property owners don't get water drained onto their properties. So all those sort of things that are done later, when do we see the, when does the community see those plans, those water drainage plans? And do, are you guys, the thing that bears me is.
That's part of the platting process. So we, we haven't even received a preliminary plat yet. So again, we're, we're going through the process. We're probably.
My fear is I keep hearing that we don't have any control. We don't have any control. We don't have any control.
Who is saying that?
You guys are saying we don't have any control over what the property owner does.
When it goes to the planning commission, we review the traffic study. We review the drainage study. We review the future land use map.
And that'll all be public because there are public funds involved at that point, right?
All of our planning commission meetings are open to the public, yes.
No, I'm saying by nature of what the zoning is going to be or this, I don't know what to call this incentive program, is everything then open to the public? Since there's public money going into this, then will the public be able to see those plans and make comment and also feel like people are going to listen to what we have to say about those comments? Whether it be access to the highway, you know, whether we need to address how children are going to get to and from school, whether we get sidewalks or not? I know these things are all part of planning. But I just hear over and over again, people saying we don't have any control. But I just want to understand what control we do have and how the community is going to be involved and how we're going to be informed.
So we don't have.
Because we're not being informed.
We don't have control over a private property transaction. So you can sell your property, I can't stop you. You can ask to rezone your property, I can't stop you. You can do that. You can do that. We have control over the platting process. We have to make sure it meets all of our rules. We make sure there's a drainage study. We make sure there's a traffic study. Yes, all of those things are public at the planning commission meetings, yes.
And they'll be, people will be informed. What is going to be the process?
Public hearings are noticed by statute. Commission meetings are listed, it's on our website. You can, if you want to know what our web, next month's meetings are and what's potential on the agenda, you can look at it right now.
Okay.
So, so if you want to be a concerned quote citizen and be well informed.
We're citizens whether quotes or not.
Well, I know that, but just, but you know how it works. I know you, I know you. You know me. And you can just look at the website if you want to stay informed about what's going on in your city.
So we have to go to the website daily to see what's going on.
Well, we're public, I mean, it's, it's out there. That's one of the things that people pay for. It's part of their taxes.
I think if you know that the community wants to know about things, I think you should make an effort to make sure they're informed.
We do.
Well, now, if you'd like to get on a, a list, we, we sent out an email.
I don't want to be on a list.
We do have people locked into getting an email blast. That kind of gives you a little update on what we're going on.
Just one last comment about the developer approaching golf course owner. And golf course owner said no. Was it no because the price wasn't right?
I'm not the developer, I'm not the golf course owner.
He would, he would, he would say yes, but the price wasn't right. Now, with this situation with Inglehart, as I understand it, the sales price is $200,000, which is a very considerate low price for all the homes that are being constructed there. So that's just one thought. Another thought is could the developer just as easily gone to this guy? And put that right there.
Right next to the other four houses that are here, yeah.
The property. And then this is deserving.
That's, I don't want to go in my backyard.
And now everybody going into Lancing gets to admire the wonderful architecture associated with these 30 foot wide houses that are going.
God, geez.
Every, every one is going to look the same except the color of the yellow paint. Right out of a Soviet Union.
Wow, okay. Thanks for that. Okay, did anyone else have any comments that they would like to come up with and address the council on?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I, I, you're emotional. I'm, I'm not allowed to be emotional because I'm up here. So it sounds like we'll end the public comment on that. And we had a motion and a second, right, for the public hearing, so call and roll.
Mr. Kavalevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. So I hope to see you folks or as many of you who want to come back and, and talk on the 17th.
There is a way for you to do this.
It'd be here.
Sign up for the weekly Eve Blast.
Oh, that's what I mentioned.
Well, I want to be sure. I don't want to go out. I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Eve Blast, every Friday. Sign up for it.
All right, thanks for that. Item number four is ordinance number 1127, Ashley LCHS rezone, case 2024 development 007. The applicant proposes to rezone a .59 acre tract of land from A1 to B2. The future land use map of Lansing comprehensive plan categories, categorizes this property as commercial and open space architecture. The applicant is processing or is proposing to split the property, to sell the property to the property owner at 1024 South Main, adjacent to the north. The property has access to South Main Street. You guys seen that in the packet, right? Okay, so I need a motion to adopt ordinance 1127 to amend the city ordinance, Lansing zoning map.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
I have a discussion, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jeanette Levy-Holdeman. I live at H24H Road. I realize that we are here today just to approve a rezoning. But I have to point out, because I've lived here entirely too long, that that piece of property has been a bit of a problem in the past. And it is because it is in the flood plain.
Right.
I will say that the gentleman who is purchasing it has now dug out a ridge along the back to be able to put a wall in. Unfortunately, the hills that go up to Mr. Steve Buffo's house are very steep and the water rushes down there. At this point, the water now will be stopped by the wall if he puts that wall in that he's dunking everything out. I would recommend, I'm, I'm not disputing that you don't approve it, but with the opportunity of a three foot drainage between the wall and the, and the actual hill that's coming down, basically to allow water from Odom and everything else that is on the north side to continue to ride down to the, the creek.
Yeah, he has not, Josh, this person has not proposed to put anything on there, right?
He has not, he's not submitted any plans for any structure to be constructed on the property, no.
It looks like there's been some digging, digging done.
He has, uh, he has graded the property and he has done some work on it. But any, uh, we had a conversation with him this week. Um, any future, um, work on the property is going to be addressed before that happens with the city so that we understand what's going on.
Right, if he has any impact on water runoff, then he's going to have to do something about that.
He, yes, he is working with Mike Spicklemeyer, our public works director, who's our flood, floodplain manager, to ensure that everything that he does is within the regulations as set forth by KDHE.
Okay.
Thanks for that.
You good with that?
Thank you.
All right. All right, we had a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Kavalevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number five is ordinance 1128 Delaware Ridge Rezone. Action is I need a motion to table the ordinance 1128 to amend the city of Lansing zoning map until March 20th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who moved? I'm sorry, who moved? Thank you.
I moved my head.
Second. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Kavalevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. I forgot to mention, I probably should have. If, if you came to talk on a certain topic and you already spoke, we can pause and let everybody go. That's not going to interrupt anything. If you'd like to stay for the last couple of items, that's up to you as well. Um, but you're free to, free to go if you have already spoke your piece and. Okay, item number six is resolution and letter of support Leavenworth Water Works grant application. The reliable supply of clean water is critical to our economy and vital to the health of our community. Presently, most residents in Lansing receive their water from Landell Water, which purchases a significant amount of water from Leavenworth Water Works every day. Leavenworth Water Works requires major upgrades to their southern treatment plant, which could cost as much as $57 million. Accordingly, Leavenworth Water Works customers would see a 10 to 15% rate increase each of the next five years. Leavenworth Water Works is applying for a grant through FEMA's Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, the BRIC program. If Leavenworth Water Works is successful in their grant application, rate increases to their customers, Lansing residents included, would likely be a lot less. So I need a motion to adopt resolution B4 2025 and letter of support.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, call and roll.
Mr. Kavalevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
No.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven is ordinance number 1126, establishing utility provider solicitor licensing and fees. The ordinance number 1126 establishes a utility provider solicitor license and adds fees related to their licensing for Lansing. I need a motion to adopt ordinance number 1126 and ordinance establishing utility, what's that? Utility provider solicitor licensing and fees related to licensing of specific transient vendors within the city of Lansing.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Kevin?
Could you remind us what we, in a while?
Okay, this is, um, the, the Clearwave had asked if we could support them and change our ordinance for utility providers. So instead of changing the transient vendor, we've added an or, or a license for utility provider solicitors. So basically, it is a six month license that they will get. They, they still abide by the same things. They have to have the, um, the background checks and all that stuff. But it, it is a fee of $600 per six month. So they're.
Pitcher ID.
Pitcher ID and they, they are aware that they have to wear it. There's only one person from that particular, particular utility that's allowed to have a license and they're allowed to per year. So we've met all their requests plus made sure that they are acting in our citizens' best interests.
What happens if that one employee quits?
We've already had that happen.
I didn't hear you just.
I said, what if that one employee quits working for the company?
This applies to all companies, all, all the utilities.
Yeah. Utilities, yeah.
Just utilities.
And I think this is a good time to remind people that if somebody comes knocking on your door and they don't have a city issued ID, they're not legit.
Correct.
If they can't show you that, close the door.
Tell them to come and get.
Underneath this ordinance, we're not approving orders of people coming to everybody all at once. You're talking about one person.
Correct.
Yeah. These are the folks that are typically in the neighborhood, but have, because of our previous ordinance, had to get one every single day that they came.
Every two weeks and they were only allowed two per year. So it was very limiting for them.
So just for utilities and, and yeah, like someone had mentioned, I think the whole point was we don't want each company to have 10 people going out throughout the community every day. Ideally, they would have one person so there's kind of a, a recognition, I guess you could say.
Ish, thanks for all your work on this.
Sure.
Anybody got? Good? All right, call and roll.
Mr. Kavalevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. Reports. Any, any division has got anything? No. Uh, city attorney?
Nothing to report, ma'am.
All right. Appreciate your assistance tonight. Tim?
I don't have anything.
Okay. We will go around the horn, starting with Jake.
Terry, great job at the library. Love to see all that. Appreciate everybody for coming out this evening and that's all I have.
All right, thanks Jake. Jesse?
Did okay, good report. Very informative. Appreciate all your hard work you're doing over there. Thanks Josh, all your hard work you've done on this projects we've talked about tonight. We hope that, you know, we can move forward with things, but we'll see how things work out. Thank you. That's all I got.
Hi, Terry, I'm very impressed with the library. You, you do amazing work. How many staff members do you have that work there with you? Total staff members?
Currently, we have four and when we're fully staffed, we'll have five.
That just proves to me the amount of effort that the three or four or five people do to make it an exceptional library and experience for everybody in the community. I just wanted to make sure the public knew that all that work is done by four or five people. So thank you very much for that. I would like to mention, and it was mentioned earlier, that we did have a study done. The study was clear that we, that our citizens, and when I was going through the election process and I knocked on every door in my ward, the number one thing was is that they wanted lower taxes. And I believe in my, I believe that this will do that. If we increase the number of houses, the rooftops, that's going to help us with our, If we increase the number of houses, the rooftops, that's going to help us with our, to broaden our tax base and lower taxes. It's also going to allow the people in our city, the teachers, the firemen, the police officers, they're going to be able to afford to live in our, in our city. I think that's important. When I was on the school board, we did talk about these type of topics. We wanted our teachers to be able to live in the city that they work, and they just can't do that right now. So, it's important that we come up with a solution. And again, we did have a strategic plan meeting, this was about a year ago, and during that strategic planning meeting, our number one goal, and I'll read it right off our sheet, it says, Lansing has a diverse quality housing stock that caters to all incomes and stages of life, and right now, we don't have that. And that's one of our strategic goals. So, this board is committed to making sure that we do what's best for all the citizens in Lansing. I would like to mention that on Saturday, I attended a open house at Core Civic. It's going to be an opportunity for our county and for Leavenworth City in particular, which I would just like to say, based on the information that I received, that I will be supporting. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them. But a couple key facts that I took away from that, and I'm just going to read this off of a sheet that I have. Core Civic has a long history of partnership in Leavenworth for nearly three decades. Their facility has delivered critical services to our governmental partners while providing meaningful careers for local staff and serving as a good corporate citizen in the community. A couple of things, it's going to create about 300 jobs, and these jobs are not, they're good incomes. We're starting, starting pay is going to be about $28.50, that's the guards that'll be working there. In addition, they're going to be hiring doctors, they're going to be hiring nurses, mental health professionals. It's going to create many, many opportunities for our county. The, in addition, the correctional officers' positions will also be hiring specialty assistance for like maintenance for the facility, HVAC personnel, which is going to give our students that are graduating, do I have a time limit?
No, I, I might impose one, though.
You're going to be a little... Soon as I find my butt. You're older right now.
Hey, so the local impact fees, once fully operational, will exceed $800,000 annually. In addition, 150K would be contributed annually for local law enforcement. And finally, my last comment, annual property taxes of approximately $1 million will go to the county. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that that project is coming up, and I, I encourage you to go out and get as much information about it as you, as you wish to. That's all I have.
All right, thanks. Dan?
I want to say, I'm blocking the heat.
You have 30 seconds.
The clock is running, you've just wasted a bit for the second, so...
I want my time back from you. Okay, I went from Core Civic as well, and I agree with my property down there. Pete, I think it's a good, good idea. Also, we had a special meeting with the Leavenworth County Court Authority this week. I've sent all of you an email of the supply package and everything. LCP? When I got here.
Okay.
At any rate, the Leavenworth County Court Authority funds Leavenworth County Development, LCDC, and they've been charged by the county commissioners that get their own funding free. And that's what we're talking about, is getting their own funding free. We had a group advise us whether now is the right time and how, how well it would be supported and things of that nature. They will be presenting that to the Board of County Commissioners, April the 12th, in a workshop following the normal meeting. But while we're talking about the Board of County Commissioners, the only agenda item is the Fire District on the 12th. So, if you have opportunity to attend, might be of interest to all of us. And that's everything I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Carrie, please.
Carrie, nice job, as always. Are you still working with the schools, too? Is there any interaction there?
We go to the preschools.
Okay, awesome. And then, Tim, Josh, thanks for your hard work. I know this hasn't been easy, and trying to get the right information out and making sure everybody's informed is, is always a challenge, so. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Carrie. Don?
Yeah. Congrats to Terry again on a job, great job, with her and her staff over there and the resources that she has. I don't have anything else, ma'am.
All right, thanks.